Sir, would you open us in prayer? I'm sure.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord. We thank you for everything you do. We thank you for this beautiful day that you have given us, Lord. Lord, we ask you to watch over our first responders, Lord, and give us the mind's eye of what you have done in the township, Lord. This is your township that you've entrusted us to. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
And sir, would you be a janitor? Did that earlier on the line?
I salute the nation's citizens, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. And sir, if I could have a roll call when you're ready. Thank you, sir. Sure.
Savior?
Yes.
Yes. Yep. Onto old business, meeting minutes approval for April 3rd, 2025, regular business meeting and the April 17th special meeting and regular business meeting.
We have to do it separately because I was not here on April 3rd.
Okay, so, meeting minutes approved for the April 3rd, 2025. Go ahead.
I'll second that.
Here in a second, I will ask for a roll call. Mr. Mazer?
Upstaged.
Mr. Flashman? Yes. And Mr. Blatt?
Yes.
Regular business meeting on April 17th, special and regular meetings. If I can have a second on that?
I will second that.
Now that I have the second, I'd ask for a roll call. Mr. Mazer?
Yes.
Mr. Flashman?
Yes.
Yes. Under new business, the FCOs, not here today, Patty Spencer with Southwest. You're up.
Oh, Happy May Day, everybody. Happy May Day. Okay, under health and safety, the Columbus Emergency Communication Center, 911, announced a deployment of next-generation 911 technology. It's AI-powered. It allows new text to 911 and allows residents to text their 911 in their native languages. The translator recognizes 55 languages. So, as well as English.
Oh, thank you.
So, if the call taker responds in English, it's translated into their native language so the person calling would understand them. Last year, this just blew me away. I don't know if your sheriff's department knows this or not, but our 911 for Columbus, which anybody who calls 911 has been sent out to the various locations, handled 1,412,355 phone contacts, which included 671,341 911 calls, 709,381 non-emergency calls, and 31,633 text messages. Yeah, I would like five. So, there is that. I'm sure you've all been seeing the information coming out about the safer downtown, which they are adding 100 new surveillance cameras. And right now, they seem to be concentrating in the short north area. So, and this is supposed to be monitored 24/7 from a new command center. Under transportation and education, the city of Columbus is holding a job fair Saturday, May 3rd, from 9:00 to 2:00 at the Barnett Community Center. And I have a copy of the flyer that outlines what the positions that they are going to be looking for. Last Thursday, our area commission were invited to Brumbles at the corner of Hopkins and Brown Road. And I must say, if any of you have dogs, this is a fabulous place. We approved them last year to become a dog park. It's huge inside. They have an area to acclimate new dogs to make sure that they are other animal-friendly, other dog-friendly. You cannot just go. You have to, if you want to be a part of it, you have to bring your vet records and make sure everything's up to date. Make sure your dog is licensed. And it's on a membership basis. You can go like one time for $8, but then it goes up if you want, you know, a monthly fee or a yearly fee. So, we were very impressed. It exceeded our expectations for what they provided. If any of you have dogs that you like to take to dog parks, I'm going to recommend them. And just for funsies for May, I have a list of all the city doings. So, if you're interested in any of them, you can go online and look up the particular festival or whatnot. And that's all I have.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the board for quick comments. Anyone have anything? Here in a minute, close to floor. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Public comments.
We have William Russell of 849 Richter. Wants to talk about how to clean. Dumping. Something's dumping.
Feel free to come up to our podium.
I'm going to say this to you before you get started. Your baby sure has grown. James, this is the baby that you put to sleep at the last night.
I have a couple photos if you guys would like.
Sure. Sure.
Are they trying to fill it in?
So, it used to be a beautiful quarry. There's a fantastic article written on it a few years ago. One of the last great Columbus quarries. It was a haven for fishing, wildlife. It was beautiful. Somebody bought it from three brothers two and a half, three years ago. Supposed to fill in half of it at the time. Well, he's gone beyond that and apparently has the permits and the zoning clearance to fill the whole thing in. Problem is, that picture's taken from the middle of my backyard. It's a yard and a half away from where my family's at along with neighbors. So, when they do this process now, since they're so far over, it's a quarry fed by three natural springs. So, it's uneven, unleveled. So, they said, so no matter what they do, the road's the way. It's going to fill the whole thing in. But it comes to a point now where they're so close to our home, the dust debris flows through the backyard to where you physically see it and you can't even open your eyes. Our kids have to go inside when they're outside when they do it. They do it throughout the day. We were given no warning that it was transitioning over there. It seems to be the property he bought still without easement road. But with residential backing right up to it, I've not been able to find the answers for the exact distance, except for 1,500 feet from public water, springs or aquifers. I saw something about 500 feet from a residential dwelling. I was unable to verify exactly what code that is. But I know the code section's in the Ohio Revised Code. Ohio Code Chapter 3714 and 3745-400. Clean heart fill must be at least 1,500 feet from public aquifers, water sources, and five feet above an aquifer. I'm sure the spring qualifies, doesn't know if it's an aquifer or not. The main concern here is a health concern with the air pollution. Noise concerns are safe, safe dump from anywhere from 5:30 in the morning to even on Sundays, Saturday, I'm asleep through the night. But my main concern here is obviously the health factor. I've contacted Franklin County Health, Jeff Gross, Gross, I believe is his name. He came out and took a look at it. We weren't home at the time for him to stop by and talk with us about it. He said it all checks out. Well, the ironic thing about it is as soon as we started making phone calls to you guys, conversations with y'all, Franklin County, the EPA, and even a detective about it, all of a sudden, it cleaned the whole area. Said all the trucks are normally dumping. They're not really dumping at the moment.
We're going to ask questions. Our three minutes are up.
I'm going to ask you to give me some grace if you don't mind.
Are you finished?
Multiple times.
Yeah.
If other people, he's contacted me about this problem. I invited me to come here to train. But he took a day off of work. I won't let him finish.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll just turn to both of them, sorry.
Not ours.
So, the health issue with the air pollution, we got the noise pollution, but also the water contamination as well. We normally have a garden. I don't think we're playing a garden this year because of all the pollutants that are floating across. We also have to check have we eaten eggs? It's just hard to find clear answers, but the answers that I have been able to find are, people say, we don't know. But I'll pull up the codes and talk to Frank County Health guy about it. The EPA has not contacted me back yet. They're supposed to run an air pollution test. My one question is how close can you run a dumping, polluting operation to backyards of people, kids, residential dwellings? And what can we do about it?
That's what he wants. Okay, sir.
So, I have several questions. First, I remember when they started in a far corner and they bought that corner and stuff and I couldn't believe they were doing it. Then I heard the same thing. They were only doing the one corner. I don't know if I spoke with you. Was it, I went out there at one time in regards to that. Is this is in the city, correct?
Yeah. Is the zoning one?
No, no, no. Well, I mean, the whole, I'm going to call it the corner.
No, it's county and city.
Okay, so is county and city. So, I got a good idea where you live because that's the service road that goes along the backside.
Yes, sir.
Right. So, when I look at this picture, man, that's almost... Have they done anything about the fish or anything?
They're all dead.
Okay.
It's asphalt residue, fiberglass, drywall dust. They shoot them with the hose to stabilize the base, reverting back to what I was saying earlier about how the base became unstable. So, Steve Smith is the owner of the property and some of the trucks that dump over there. He instructed his guys in quotes to dump on that side because it's too muddy on that whole big outcrop that it filled in already.
So, what you're seeing here is not a water truck. They're just dumping.
Debris that they shoot through a hose and it's supposed to go into the water. It's staying under the water, but it's like this deep where we're at.
Right, right.
It's filled in all of it already. So, it shoots, skins the water, goes up in the air. And the residual photo is it just sits on top of the water.
Right.
Doesn't go to the bottom.
So, there are many concerns because that is to the east of you, correct?
Right.
Okay. So, many concerns are, you're on well water, right? Are you city water?
We are city now. Still have a well. And I'm not sure if other houses, because we had the option to go to city or sewer.
Okay.
12 years ago, for a city well.
Because we've been across the road.
No. And then also makes the road conditions hazardous there on Hart going towards Harmon because they have cleaning trucks, cleaning the road. But it puts dust about this thick, it actually puts a brush in the road.
A little bit of water, like, a light.
Turns into muddy ice. Same thing for 104, about 104, something here.
So, I'm, I'm...
We have well water? Okay.
Because the reason that I'm asking...
And that would violate the 1,500 foot that's in the code.
Right.
But apparently he has all the permits, what the Franklin County Health guy said.
So, you're talking about something, I don't know how deep that was originally, but I thought it was deep.
It was, the furthest guys fished all the time would probably be 22 feet on rain season. But the majority of it's no deeper. It wasn't deeper than any deep. And apparently, the code, they're permitting, what I've found is you can go up to the height of Hartford and that's on the hill. And my neighbor's house is in a flood plain and I'm the first house out of the flood plain.
Right, right.
So, if you're jacking up the land, say 20 feet.
That's my next question.
Above where the water used to go, where's the water going to go now? So, landfill's also behind that to the north.
So, what do they go, what is the plans? Do you know what the plans is for this property when they fill it in? Or they want to build on top of it?
I've heard from multiple people, it's going to be a semi-truck parking area that's going across the street. Don't think you should have that that close to people either. But he also asked for permits or zoning queries to put a building on it. But again, I'm not the expert. That's why I came here to try and talk about it. When it was only halfway, it was like, okay, you're far enough away. It was loud. We have a five-year-old and then a nine-month-old. And these dump trucks dump. I'm sure everybody's heard a big dump truck dump sound. Sounds like you're blowing a hole in them out. And when they're at their peak, which starts to get made first, they have a sign posted, start dumping every day all day. It's just constant. Shakes windows. Now, our furnace filters constantly filled up with this, this air, this debris, our windows. It's just, our garage has two windows that open towards this quarry. I leave them crap. And if you leave a car parked for two days, you go out there, the whole car, you can wipe your finger across it.
I'm there right across the street and you can barely see his house from all the dirt blowing across there. So, Mr. Mazer, I have no answers of where do we start?
John, I've already contacted the EPA and the county and the county's looking into it.
My county contact says it's all peachy.
It's all what?
It's all peachy. It's all good. He's a lot of real. I've only spoke to him once on the phone. He spoke to my wife on a separate day. We were unable to meet first. And that's where I refer back to when I was asking about the codes that I pulled and looked at. It's in the code. He's violating the code, which is the law. And the county says it's all good.
Because I'm concerned, you know, I followed you along in the whole thing and I'm concerned, right now, we're having rain every couple of days and stuff, which is good. Clear the air and stuff like that. But what's going to happen in June, July, when we get the heat and wind and no rain?
That's horrendous. So, we're at the point where it's like, oh, if this continues, we have to move. Fine, but how are you going to sell the house next year to somebody?
Yeah.
Not enough. Or close to value enough to get out and get on.
I wish I had answers. Mr. Stevens, anything that we've not thought of to call or?
I mean, it sounds like everybody's touched base with the appropriate people.
Yeah.
I don't have any.
Unfortunately, I mean, I can't.
The only that I can think of that might help is if this board, if we get with our legal department, our next meeting, if we pass a resolution saying that we are against this type of construction in this matter and what it's doing to residents, and then send it to Franklin County. Will that have an impact with Franklin County that is saying they're good? I don't know. The other thing is, it would make a good media. If you reached out to any of the media stories, any of like 6, 4, and 10. Sometimes when that's seen on TV, things tend to happen a little bit quicker. I would be happy to work with you on that if you need be. Or I know Mr. Blevins has been talking with you. Or any of us would be happy to do that. I'm just thinking outside the box of everything that you've done as a young man. You come in here and you've addressed the board. You've given us stuff that I'm like, oh, where do I go from here? Because everybody above us is saying you're peachy king. I don't buy that. I think that there's more that can be done. The greasy will get, the squeaky will gets to grease. I think that, like I said, first thing we need to do is get with Julie and see if there's any resolution that we can pass to say that we're not for this and that there's got to be a better way. And there's three entities in here. We got Franklin Township, Franklin County, and the city of Columbus, which is really a daunting task because if they go on the city side, they said it was too muddy, et cetera, et cetera. So, then they want to put you over on this side, which you're on Franklin Township, which our rules and regulations come from Franklin County. So, now, what we're hearing is Franklin County is like, you're okay. Everything's good the way it's gone. But with the weather that we've been having, I'm real concerned about what's going to come next when it's dry. It's going to be worse.
What about a petition?
Well, we could do a petition.
The neighborhood, get up a petition.
And where does the petition go to?
Back there.
You know what I mean? If they're already saying it's peachy king. So, what I'm trying to do is to say if the Board of Franklin Township is against this and what they're doing and send that to the county, will that have more leverage than the residents to have in a petition? Because, you know, I'm not against a petition. But what I'm trying to think of, what's going to give you the most bang for the buck? And it can't hurt, that's for sure. But I'm trying to look at a way to say, okay, we need to get some people out here and look at this. And we need to get people out here now because of what we're seeing. The roads, chief, the roads having that kind of black, I'm going to call it black silk, whatever, stuff like that. What can we do about that?
Well, the first drive is not really a roadway, it's a driveway.
Okay, so theirs, but does it affect ours?
I mean, it could to some degree. I know it does on Hart Road, but they use typically street sweepers to clean the mud and stuff off per the, you know, county's guidelines.
Okay.
I stopped using Hart Road because I...
I mean, the dust is terrible. It is.
Okay, so, Mr. Arnold, what in the fire service would we be able to? I mean, I know the fire service deals a lot with EPA, the foam and stuff that we use. So, there's different agencies that we deal with. Is there anything that you can think of that you could add to this? Okay. So, I've got three of my department heads and I'm trying to think as we're all here together. And I think the biggest thing is if we send something to the county commissioners for Franklin County, they basically sit like we do and they're over the county. If we send a resolution that we pass as a board to, to them and then visit them, I'll be more than happy to attend one of their meetings if you're able to go to the meeting and we can address this there, that would be great. Meanwhile, I would not be afraid to reach out to any of the 6, 4, and 10 and invite them out to see what's going on. That also gets people's attention because the departments that are saying you're good, their bosses is going to watch us on TV and go, we need to get some attention and look at this. Then things tend to happen. It's almost called shaming, but it's not. It's telling the truth of what residents are happy to live in and that they shouldn't just for the glorification of somebody filling in a quarry of a bottle, a body of water to do what? Park semis on. And does it, will the code permit them to park? Are they planning on parking on gravel, dirt? There's, you know, wells in the area, underground aquifer that we know about because they're covering it up. So, you're going to have diesel fuel contaminants and things of that nature reaching into the soil. So, are they planning on having a surface of some sort, a concrete or asphalt? Because I believe nowadays you cannot just park trucks on a gravel lot. So, there's a lot of questions that we can ask. I'm just trying to think of what would give us the biggest bite to make them say, oh, we can change this. Us as trustees can only try to think outside the box and try to remedy something. We don't have any authority to be able to shut it down or stop them. But that doesn't mean that we can't come up with something.
The number on this sheet is your contact number I can use to have? The number you filled out?
Yeah, so you can read it.
I'm ready. Yeah?
Okay. So, what I want to do something, so I'm going to do something a little bit different because I see residents are here. I'm going to open the floor for any comments that we may not have covered on this.
I did talk to the truck driver, the, I think it was the Strasser truck, you had a picture of. And dust was blowing and he kept pulling me aside. He's like, we don't want to breathe this in. We need to do it. We don't want to breathe this in. I'm like, what about my kids sitting outside where it's all blowing?
Yeah.
Oh, well, I was just supposed to be here. I don't know. Steve dispatched me over here. Okay, well, they're all breathing it in anyway.
That's when I seen all that dirt blowing all through the neighborhood.
For our officers that, you know, if we are seeing dirt and stuff and we have a good PC, we may as well see if they got, if they're certified driver, if they've got their CPA or not CPA, CDL license. Who knows? If they're willing to do this, do they actually have drivers that have CDL?
And there's large trucks going up and down Richter Road. I don't believe that that road should have those large trucks on.
These are a lot of questions that, chief, if your department can, you know, do what they can do, not to make trouble, but to actually make sure they shouldn't be there and that people operating in the trucks shouldn't be operating in trucks. Because if they're operating in this capacity, potentially, is there anything else? Because we need to do what we can do. And then you had a question.
This apparently is within area commission area, right? And I think I heard you say that part of that property was Columbus.
Yes. Then Columbus, I spoke to somebody for the zoning and they said it's Franklin County zoning for that whole property. It fits in the, I forget the third quarter.
The east side of that from my understanding, the long, what road is that that goes on Hart? Hart Road. With city or something. I thought part of it, because when they originally started, because I could be on your side and look over in that corner on the right side. And I'm like, what are they doing? And that was just a year ago when I was called out there and looking at that.
I'm thinking you're going to need very specific outline of what is Columbus Park and do 311 and ask for code enforcement. Have the complaint.
Or go online and Google 311. It's easier to send in an email.
Yeah, send an email.
I did that.
Okay.
You've done that? And code enforcement, do you or zoning? Two separate.
I went to both because the answers I got were much like others. Was that any of those? That's the only guys there is a detective looking at it.
We've spoken with.
Our area commission meets next on May 13th here at 6:30. If you want to come stop in, we do have a city liaison that attends our meetings. And maybe if you've talked about it between her and maybe some of us can at least address the Columbus portion of it and help.
So, the more, the more attention that we get to this, I think, I think a lot of people will then start saying, oh, we need to take a, we need to take another look at this. And the reason that they're working quickly is to get as much done as possible before potentially them getting shut off from going anymore. But what we would like to do is get, see a cease and desist until this has been looked at. And I think, sir, if Julie's able to put something that we would, we would like to see a cease and desist until certain studies in air pollution are done to make sure that this is in a safe manner. However, us just sitting here and looking at this, we know that that's not going to pass a, any type of, someone coming out and doing an air pollution, et cetera, especially with the amount of dust and dirt and the debris. Is that any cancerous stuff going into ground? There's got to be a lot of questions about what they're putting in ground, especially with the two aquifers that converge, three, three aquifers that converge. I am shocked that we have not seen any action on that through any other agencies to come out right away and see if that's something. You know, you might have spilt some oil from changing oil in your car and they're right on you. You know, but something like this, they're not right out right away. I'm just shocked. So, at this time, I appreciate you. We're going to go on. Is there anything else that you have for us?
How do I get about the cease and desist process?
Well, what I'm going to do is I'm going to request that in our next meeting to see if we can get that.
From our board.
From our side, from our attorney, a resolution that would be read here. And then I would like to send it to the county commissioners. Don't be afraid to reach out to county commissioners right now. We can put online. Each commissioner has their own secretary. And explain what's going on, send some photos and et cetera. So, a lot of, the more that people hear about this, then... So, um, a lot of, the, the more that people hear about this, then, um, obviously when it comes around, uh, more action could take place from that. So I encourage you to keep doing what you're doing. We're gonna work on our end and hopefully this will come out, um, great for everybody in our community.
Thank you.
Sorry to have to take the day off to come, uh, but I think it's gonna benefit you. And I'll keep, uh, with Mr. Mazur, and I'll keep you up to date, gave it a few days at a time, okay? Because we don't meet for two more weeks, but I'm gonna try to get you whatever information we're able to get. Sherman, he speaks to the waiter. I'll try to get it to you, okay? Not to interrupt you, who is the property owner?
Uh, Steve Smith.
Steve Smith. Is there a company?
Uh, he owns a company, Steve Smith, homing or dumping? He owns a couple of other properties there on, uh, Arman.
Okay. Let's think of this company.
Their phone number, you know, I can send pictures to, act of where my wife's in the neighborhood. Your phone number.
My card and everything. And then you can check up to Nicole. She'll, she'll have something.
Yeah, Nicole has mine. Here. I got an old one.
You have the answer.
You have my number.
You guys do answer.
Yes, thanks. Thank you. Thank you for coming in and, uh, the only way sometimes that we know of these things happening is people coming to the meeting to tell us. We may have not known that. If we, we're not always driving the area. So if people in our community, you know, you see something, say something, and that's very important. It makes a big difference when you have. I can easily go to each department head and ask, is there something else that we can do? When all of us are in a room together, it makes a huge difference. So that was good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vicky DiMaggio, thirteen twenty-four Fisher Road, Dakota Insurance, ma'am. You have three minutes.
Oh, Lord. Too much time? You don't have to finish the whole three minutes.
Okay. The reason why I'm here is from where I live, I have an acre right next to me. And then there's a building. I don't know. It's a company that owns it. And in fact, they do countertops in front is that Rosa Entertainment thing and then the taco truck.
Yes.
Well, between my land and where there is, there are parked vehicles that have been there a year with no license plates, expired tags, and they just parked up and down. And then when I, me and my husband were here some months back, we have the map in Cromwell Drive, and you guys couldn't figure out who owned it. So I called Franklin County zoning. Franklin Township owns it. Franklin County owns the one off of El Paso.
Okay.
But Franklin Township owns it. Now, they're putting illegal cars on there. John Maynard is who I talked to at Franklin County zoning. I want them vehicles gone. You know? I mean, the, more and more keep coming. Um, did, you said you went over and looked?
We spoke about this, uh, was it two weeks ago?
Yeah. Cause I know there for a while, I was seeing people go in the back because it's wooded and then a creek and then we own the land in the back that goes to the freeway. People going in there, coming out. I don't know if someone's that homeless camp or whatever. I have no problems with the people that rent that, you know? But when I was gone a week and came home last night, I've noticed now, there, there's the gravel. Well, there ain't gravel there no more, but, uh, Cromwell Drive, and then there's a strip of grass that is owned by the township too. They're coming over further and further cutting our grass, and they only cut it when no one is home. They know our vehicles. So I want the vehicles gone. I want some signs posted or something saying, no parking. I'm gonna order some today, put them up where the property line is. But it's just getting worse and worse. And, you know, a couple of months back, I seen the fire department go back there, someone cut their hand or something. They have to go down that and then turn that sharp corner, and then they have to, it's a real sharp turn. You've been down there, John, you see it.
Yeah.
You know? And you too, Jim. But, I mean, what can we do?
Okay. So it's ironic that you came in today for this. It is on our agenda. We have noticed that the cars are parking. We've already talked to our road department about putting signs up that says, you can't park here. And then next we'll get with our police, and then we have a tow company. So, exactly.
Get them out of there.
So what we have to do is we have to do it in a systematic way. So that unfortunately, you ever heard criminals have more rights than us? We have to go through a certain procedures to get the signs up so that they are correct. Then after a certain point, then it gets passed over to the chief, and then our officers can go through there. We call a tow truck, they tow.
Yeah, you know, because.
I'd wait to see what Mr. Mazur has to say.
I just, I, I, I get flustered. I mean, I don't, I don't allow people.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, if they wanna park there, then you guys should charge them. Cause it's your property.
Right.
They are parking illegally.
No, we don't wanna sell it to them because it'd be a worse problem. You wanna take, okay, go ahead. Well, we'll let you go ahead and have a seat.
Okay.
And then we'll, we, this was on the agenda, so we're gonna move it up now.
Well, you know, that gives a mysterious waste.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is, this is DiMaggio?
Yes.
In fact, when were we there? Last week? We were there last week, and we see the dilemma that you're experiencing. And, um, my first thought, not knowing anything really about the situation, and you explain this. You have what, uh, three quarters of an acre?
I have an acre.
An acre, okay. So in talking with Mr. Stevens, I said, what would the demander should do, and I think you addressed it. Put up no trespassing signs on your property. And then I think Chief, right of entry, you need something that you can.
Yeah, is, is the, just so I'm clear in my own head, is it, is it just property that we own or is it actually a dedicated?
It's a dedicated street. It is Cromwell Drive, and then there's a strip of grass. When Dave Distlehorse owned it years ago, there's a driveway that goes into his property that he rented.
Yeah.
And then it comes out on Fisher Road. It makes a U-turn. Truckers and all that use that.
Right. So is Cromwell Drive part of the gravel that goes around the building? Or is it the grass to the west?
It's the, it's the go straight.
Yes, yes, just straight.
Well, there's no gravel there now. There's big holes, but it's that and then the strip of grass.
Okay, no, anywhere.
You, you get what I'm saying? So that's.
I guess my question is, hmm, to simplify this, if, if Mrs. DiMaggio puts no trespassing in her green space, does that give us the ability, if she'd like us, to go in and get people off the property?
Yeah.
Yes, cause it's your property.
Well, it's your, no, your green space, your one acre.
Yeah, well, they park right on the line. But now they're cutting grass way over into our property, and they only do it when we're not there.
Are they, are they parking on your, from your property too?
Uh, they do sometimes when they have parties.
Well, that was my next question.
Okay.
You know, and a lot of times they will come through the land and go out my driveway.
Yeah, use it as a cut through because there's.
Exactly.
So many cars that they can't, they're blocked in and someone wants to leave, or they, they drive across your property to your driveway.
Right. I don't know on the, the place where they have the party house, what's the limit of people occupancy there? I don't know.
So we did check on that. Chief, uh, do you, are, you have anything to add about where we were when we checked on the, the party house? And how many people, it's, it was split at one time, and then I know Todd was working on that. Do you have anything to add to that?
No, as far as I understand, they're abiding by.
Code.
Fire code.
Okay.
I haven't had no problems with them, and I don't have problems with the little, the truck, taco truck or whatever.
Okay.
He has great business, I'm gonna tell you. I have no problem with that. It's just all them vehicles that are just sitting.
Well, my que, it's two questions. So we would have the ability, if you put no trespassing signs up, for the chief to go in and remove cars or ticket cars? Is that?
Correct. As an abandoned vehicle, so there's, there's two ways you can handle that. Um, if you, we can certainly do it that way, but it would be an abandoned vehicle and we have to tag it for seventy-two hours.
Quit it. Oh, I'm sorry, Chief, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, if they're there for a party, they're gonna be gone anyway. Um, I can connect her with a person from, say, Capital Towing, where they put up signs. And then anytime somebody parks on your property that doesn't belong, you call the number and they simply kind of take their car.
Right, but where they're parking now is not my property. It's the township.
It's the second, the second question I.
Yes, it is the township's property, but I look at it all the time.
So what we could do, hopefully, is put up signs through the company and let them just cruise it every now and then. Like when you're younger, you guys up on campus, you parked the wrong place, you come back, your car's gone.
If I had a bunch of abandoned cars in my driveway, you guys would be there ticketing. But you're not ticketing them, and you're not towing in the way. And it's the township's. John Maynard, you can call him. It's Franklin County zoning.
Okay.
Um, I talked to him, and he said it is the township's.
So here's what we're at now. This was on the agenda to take care of today. So what my question is for Jim and, and Chief is, can we put signs up on our property if you park here and just, and, and just let the tow company handle it?
We can, we can put up no parking signs down through there, enforceable no parking signs. I think we'd have to take it through our legal like we normally do, and that's what we're kinda waiting on right now as a direction on what signs to put there.
So that's my question. If, since it's the township property as it is now, if we go through a tow company and they put their signs up, they handle it, we don't.
I was just gonna say, if it's a dedicated roadway, we're, we're still talking about?
It's just property.
It is.
So it's not still the roadway?
It is dedicated property to the township.
What is?
Even though the road has gravel.
Yeah, yeah.
There's some of the grass that gives.
They're off the edge of the gravel. They pull in this way.
So if we put up no parking signs, we still enforce it with the right of way?
Right. They're parked in the right of way and not on the gravel. Sometimes they park on the gravel, and I guess the building, when they have parties.
Still be like it was a roadway.
Yes. It, it, where the building is, there's like a piece of grass, which is owned by whoever the owner is of that property. I've tried looking, and it's a company. But where the gravel starts and goes over to where the end of the cars are, cars parked, that is owned by you guys, by the township.
So to the board, what I would say that we do, instead of, uh, you know, getting Julie involved and putting up signs and then ticketing them and doing that, is if it is indeed our property and we know exactly what is ours without question, we go and put signs two inches from your property saying, all cars will be towed. That gives the tow company the opportunity to cruise through there. If you would like and you see cars there, you call that. They would love to hear from you. Hey, there's, there's cars sitting out here. They will come and tow, because that's how they make their living. It costs the township nothing to do. We enter into a contract. Did you have a question? Chief?
I have one for the chief. Uh, I don't know that Capital goes out and actively, goes out and patrols looking. That's not the type of business they're in, like up, when you go up to OSU.
Not Camaro.
And these places are out.
Right.
Working these parking lots. It would only get activated if someone called them and said, go get the car.
Correct. Or our officer see it.
Yeah.
And once we start, whether it's towing, writing tickets, or whatever, once we start enforcing something, it'll come to an end. They're not going to want to have their car impounded. They're not gonna want to have their car ticketed. Once you start this, it'll stop, but we need to get this lady some satisfaction and get it started.
There is nothing but cars that don't run, and I don't know if it's from the place that puts on them down there.
I was gonna ask you, was those the ones that's non, untagged and?
Well, all of them are untagged, even down where, where I look out my back door and those cars that are all, and then they have a trailer that they put all their scraps and stuff in. I don't think a lot of them are.
I think these are parts cars.
Exactly, or something, but.
Chief, can you, can you have a, can you swing by there and, and, and take a look at it if you want me to meet you out there? I'd be more than happy to.
Yeah, that would be put up the signs we need to. Either way, we can fix the problem.
Yeah.
You know, it would be greatly appreciated. I've lived there forty-some years and have never had this.
It's just become an issue in the last year.
About four, about four years. It's just getting worse.
Okay.
And then, you know, I didn't know people were living in the back, homeless. You said you walked over there.
I didn't walk in the woods.
Cause we can find out we have homeless there and see what's going on.
If there's woods there, there's homeless.
You know, because I've seen people coming back. At first I thought before, when I came here about six months ago, because I don't think the back building had a bathroom, and I think they were going back there to use the bathroom.
Okay. So, um, at this time, Mr. Mazur.
He has a question for the chief.
Chief, do we have to get the no parking signs?
Yeah, if, even if we own the pro, if, if it's a roadway, then we would treat it like, like we do Chippewa, and then we enforce it, and we use our tow company, of course.
Okay.
If it's private property, and, and we can go out there and look at it, then we can put up the other signs with Capital.
Okay.
You know, and I, I don't see many of the officers. I would like it if at least a couple of times a week, they just drove down through there and go around the building to see what else. You know, I don't wanna cause any big problems. I just want.
You're a resident. You have every right to want.
No.
That's why you are here for. This is what you're supposed to do.
You know, I just want, please.
Okay. Well, this is one way to get it. You came to the right place.
I know.
So my question to the board and to the chief, um, at this point, can the board turn this over to Mr. Mazur? And it be done, or is there any action that's gonna be done, um, from the board at this point?
Um, I'm, I'm similar with the, once we determine the signage, you may need resolutions.
Okay. So we'll get the process started.
Did you raise your hand, Jim?
Yeah, I did. Appreciate that. Um, when I looked into that, that part of Cromwell is not part of the road mileage, so it's not really considered. The county doesn't consider that.
It's just like us.
It's just like our private property, and that's all I wanted to say. It's not, and I don't know how that would change the signage that we would put on there.
That's why I was asking.
Part of the road isn't considered anywhere road.
So the whole gravel alongside the building is?
Well, we were up there the other day. It looks like where the gravel's now approached even like further. Like that part of our, the property, I notice it's kind of a sliver that kind of.
But they do have an access drive, correct? That's theirs.
One that's right on the edge of their building that goes back.
So even if we had to, we could easily put some posts and run a couple of cables down through there.
Yes.
Is, and, I mean, that doesn't take, that doesn't take us a lot of attorneys and signs and?
You'd have to take it all the way to the woods.
Yeah.
From the roadway all the way to the woods.
Well, that would be a long ways. But even like.
Not really.
Where she's at, because it does kind of get trees and stuff. But even if we went from there to the front of the building, it would be probably what, a hundred feet?
Is that entrance?
Yeah.
Is that entrance?
Not the entrance.
Franklin County?
Well, I'm talking from the, from where the building sits.
Yeah.
The building sits, if we put, uh, some poles with, um, cable, even if it's just one cable, and we just went all the way down to the back of the building.
And then make notification with the people in the building that that's the reason that this is up here.
But if we did that, we can do that immediately tomorrow if we were, uh, wanted to. And then we still could put up our signs, but that's an action that we could take right away. If we had some old utility poles, cut them in half, go dig it down, drill it down, however you guys do it, and, uh, put them in, put a ke, one cable through, it just gives them the point that, hey, you know, no parking.
But here's, here's the thing. If you put it close up, up to the building, you still have the road. They're still gonna park if you don't put something clear to where the woods start. They're still gonna go around and come through and park it.
Probably.
Yeah, yeah, but we, we're trying to do something. Let us get something going.
Okay.
And then we can come back and wonder why the phone bumped it's here.
Okay.
So at least we can get an aspect going and do this and let the people know. And then we can worry about the backside as we go along, because I like to take action right away.
Okay. That's good. And if, I live right there, so if anybody has any questions, you can come knock on my front door.
Okay.
Cause we keep, okay. All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Virgil, I think it's Virgil Love, uh, sixteen sixty-six Peabody?
Yes.
You have three minutes, sir.
Now, the property at sixteen sixty-six Peabody in Brookdale.
Uh huh.
And, uh, it's company, uh, part of, part, part of the company who drive in next to me.
Okay.
And all there is between us is just a fence. And we got a building right next to the house. And all there is between us is just a fence, and we got a building right next to the house, and it's right next to the house. You can hardly squeeze in between them, they open the door and they're in there, sanding and driving along cars and painting, and you can't sit outside and smell the paint. And the body give a smell, uh, where they put the body stuffed in it. They have the wado, fiberglass, and the paint, you can't sit outside, and they got every person running all the time until ten, eleven o'clock at night.
They worked all night last night, they, I mean, after you left Randy, they opened the garage back up and they worked all, they were working at six o'clock this morning.
And she was like getting here cause she couldn't get out cause they parked behind us, they parked right there, they parked trucks right behind us and we can't get out the driveway.
There's a line of car, they're moving them in right now, there's like three semi trucks over there.
Probably got twenty cars over right now that keep bringing them.
I got questions when you're done.
Yeah, when you're done, we got, I got questions.
We had, we moved out a couple of the girls in the tents, I just did that yesterday.
I wanna give you your full three minutes to speak before we speak.
And across Peabody, the railroad track, and then you've got cars all along, stacked up all along there. And it's, it's, it's just a mess, there's no room.
Okay.
The whole, the whole Bridgeville right there, how all these businesses looking on the, uh, private area where people live, and they got all these big white trucks coming through all the time, tow trucks, blocking roads.
I'm trying to picture where this is.
It's back by the railroad tracks.
Yeah, it's just like over there, Bridgeville.
Is it, is it across the street? I, I hate to take up your time with the question.
That's good.
Is it across the street from the old Auto Pawn place and, um,
Yep.
Used to be a, used to be a motor, motor building shop or auto parts shop on the same side?
Yes.
So that, that fenced in area by the?
He's talking about where you go down around the curb, not the fenced in area, it's just on this side of the fenced in area.
Okay.
Yeah, Hert, Hert Hills only from like Frank Road to Bridgeville, a little near these.
So is it where they used to kick the gravel on the road, that little workshop in that curve?
On a, on a curb in Wegman Center multiple times.
Yeah, it's the curb, but they have moved on down, they, they, they bought the building next to me, and that's why there's a line of trucks right now.
I think she's got, uh, go ahead Nicole.
So, um, I've been talking with the special agent with the railroad company, um, me and, um, police department, we already have a plan. Um, an officer's gonna go out and they're gonna sticker every single car along that, of the railroad side, all the way down Peabody, every car in the grass. They're gonna sticker every car, we have seventy-two hours to move those vehicles.
They're unloading them right now.
Well, then I guess we gotta get more stickers.
I mean, I had to ask them to move so I could get my car out to come here.
So, um, and also it's gonna sticker every single car, and we have to make a list of every car, and then I gotta send that list over to the special agent, he just has to sign the form saying that we can remove them from the railroad's property, and then after seventy-two hours, whatever's still there, we can have towed away. So obviously that doesn't.
Also do you like the, like the signs, like the no parking, like do I gotta keep going that store to ask them to move so I can get out?
It's not our property, it's the railroad's property, so we can't put up no parking signs for them.
But the street itself.
Um, I mean, that would be, if they're parking in the street, that would be them parking in the right of way.
So I park my car in the street and I get home, I'm okay? Well, I'm just saying, like, how do I get out?
I guess like, I, I can't really say, cause that'd be like, you know, people parking along the side of the street on curb.
Yeah.
No, there's no curbs over there, so I don't know what, what the law is with that, but with their vehicles like parked on that far side and, and the grass, I can take care of that. Um, as far as other vehicles, if they're blocking your driveway, I don't know if that's a issue that you need to call the police department for, that's something probably Byron can help with, but at, at least all those other vehicles down there, we're gonna take care of that as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you're blocking it, you just call them.
It's every day.
And we'll just.
Every day.
Well, they're working right next. That's my next question, so here's what I'm wondering is, I know people that have, um, businesses that they do painting and et cetera. They have to have a paint booth, they have to have a, a very expensive system that captures the fumes and all the things to go with it. They can't just make their paint booth and then just spray and it goes into the atmosphere, so.
Mr. Maynor said he's.
Uh, if, if you give me that information, they're spraying, they're painting cars in there?
They were doing that yesterday and last night.
I don't think that they are zoned to be able to do that, so I can, I can submit that to zoning.
They're not.
Is it the, is it the shop that's right there on the corner at the curb?
The one that John George used to have.
Or is it the one further down, like in the middle ways of Peabody?
It's, and they're clear out to the middle.
Okay, it's, it's the shop that's like in the middle of Peabody?
Yeah, but another little railway in the box.
It's the, the one on the corner, those are the same people.
Do you happen to know what the physical address of that building is?
One six six one.
Okay, I'll submit that to, um, our zoning enforcement officer, okay?
Okay, so as you can see, I'm, I'm glad to say that we were pretty much alerted to this and we've already been working on it. So it's great again that you come to our meeting, as I said to the other resident, if you see something, say something, that's what these meetings are for, so you can address your board of trustees for Franklin Township, so that's very important. So I know that, you know, we've got the police here, everyone's here.
Add us to the list, I'm sure they're violating fire code.
Okay, so we can send them over.
It's right next to my house.
And check it, so the beauty is.
You might as well go by too, I've been by and I, I spoke with Captain Breaker about it, and I've actually had to stop in to the one on the curb multiple times, cause I'm, that's my route, like when we're down in there plowing, there's times you can't even get around her because of cars, and then there's somebody, I think, still living in that camper.
There is.
They've stretched an extension cord through there, well, the amount of times that we plowed this winter, I took that extension cord out.
Yeah, this is down. They moved down from the curb down this way and that.
They tell me the same thing, they say we don't, they just say we don't speak English.
Get out of the truck and that's.
So I just, I went straight over to the trees and got rid of the girls two days ago.
Okay.
And there's still bags of trash back there, now it's just, it's going all down, there's a, there, there was a big grocery cart on the railroad track.
There you go.
Well, I look home, I'm glad that you're bringing this to our attention because, you know, we will use all of our resources, and our resources sit in this room. So they're hearing it firsthand, and we don't have to try to direct them, they heard what you said, and I'm sure you'll see us out there, so I wanna thank you very much.
I'll drop by there this afternoon.
Was there any, like, a certain time of night that they should be, like, closing down?
We have a sound ordinance, and Chief, that is at ten o'clock? Yeah, so they can't be working all night long, so.
They, they were all night long last night.
I can assure you that one of our officers will be by there tonight to, uh, see if they're working.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who else do we have on here?
Um, we have a county guy here, but I don't know if he and the young lady, I don't know if they have anything for us.
Did we have anyone else, we have three?
No, we're done.
Okay, and then from the county ma'am, do you have anything for us to address?
Um, well, the same resident that had made a complaint about the drug activity.
Yes.
It happened again, um, the resident called me and I, um, talked to the detective from our unit, and they actually made the arrest, the lady that is running the show there, um, she was arrested along with some other people. Um, and they signed a lot of drugs inside the house, so they trying to work with the landlord to make sure that he doesn't rent that unit to the same people.
Yeah, because there, there were shooting at one time and stuff like that, and then you got them out of there, and then they came right back?
But the lady was left behind, the one that was renting the, the residence.
It's like not getting all the root of the weed out, it comes back.
Exactly, so then the, the neighbor, the resident that called here, he called me again, he said, "I don't know, it's back again, but it's full force." So then I called our sergeant and he started, you know, doing what they have to do the procedure. And then he texted me and say, "Hey, we made an arrest, everybody's been out of the house, it shouldn't happen again," and they working with the landlord.
Gotcha, okay, well, thank you very much, I appreciate that, and thanks for the work that you do, cause that helps our.
Is there anything I, I can do to help out, you said the people, they spoke another language?
Right.
Do they speak Spanish?
Yeah.
Okay, I can help if you want me to?
And you, after the meeting, if you guys can get together and then give her more particulars, that would be great.
Oh, okay.
Maybe there's a language barrier and?
No, they just mess with ya, they just smile at me and like, act like they, like, you know. So then it just makes me mad, that's what made me have to go over to behind the trees and, and I seen all the trash and I thought I better just get back out of there.
Okay.
And I look out my kitchen window and you can see everything going on out there.
Uh, Chief.
I'm available if you know.
Okay, thank you guys very much.
Not a lot today. Actually, I have someone. Um, we do have these stats for April, we're gonna do this first. Uh, one thousand ninety-three calls for service, assist other units, forty-four domestics, nine burglaries, three dog bites, one hundred auto crashes.
Thank you.
Five hundred, three sex offenses, two robberies, one shooting, two persons with a gun, twelve stolen vehicles, or recovered stolen vehicles, five suicide attempts, ten vandalism's, twelve threats or harassments, fifty alarm drops, eight assaults, fifty-three suspicious persons with vehicles, three missing persons, thirty-two deaths, eight juvenile complaints, five fights, eight, uh, alcohol-related crimes, three overdoses, ninety reports taken, hundred forty-three traffic stops, eighty-four citations, and forty-nine anger counts.
Wow.
Yeah. Move slow, this is my tone.
A little bit, a little bit. Uh, any questions for us, any questions?
I didn't hear, uh, any, you may have said any, uh, noise ordinance.
Um, no.
So we've had it in the last month, is that a month?
Yes.
There's no infraction for noise.
No one called in.
Okay.
Um, well, the weather is broken, uh, we are gonna start up our hurricane outreach again. Uh, the board is okay with it, I would like to try it out front again, and let's say it's an hour, and park one. Uh, just to see if we can get people for it, this obviously is in the township, in the township property. Uh, there is a big parking lot, so there's plenty of people for it, so we can do that end stage from by the. We can do that, I can't get to. Um, we have an issue, uh, which Carol took care of this for us, uh, on Ray Avenue, I think she sent out pictures of, uh, individuals sitting in a tent with a dog, and we got there yesterday, she already moved them away. While she was out there cutting the elderly acres, that was.
Cheryl, I don't know what we'd do without you, I don't know what you would do without that property, I mean, that, that keeps you young at heart, even though that's not a good thing.
That keeps me meat or a snake.
I mean, I just can't get over how people do that.
You haven't seen the, you haven't seen the messages I received?
Um, there's been issues of liquid dumping in the quarry, which our environmental detective is working on.
The quarry that we're talking?
Same one we.
Okay, gotcha.
Um, we don't know what the liquid was, uh, a really good object, but he was working.
Okay.
And, let's see, and we have issues at Carlock L sixty-two, so we have readvised them of the noise ordinance that we have, we're enforcing. Apparently, they allow an individual to live there, which is not zoned residential, so that's also been turned over to zoning, so we are gonna work with Kelsey, the, uh, ZEVEN agent, and see what we can do to help, not only the noises are, so we'll take care of that. Um, but as far as the cars and things like that, which is, the cars are, I don't know. So I'm kinda gonna work this out in thirteen minutes.
So, I know sixty-two is basically not us, Jim may have to help here, just fifteen feet from the center line setback and all of that type of stuff doesn't apply to sixty-two because those cars are so close to sixty-two that you wouldn't have the ability, if you had a flat tire, to pull off and be off the road. I can imagine that it's okay to park those cars that close to sixty-two, irregardless if it's township or not township.
Um, I, what almost, up, up the top of my head, I'm not really sure what the right of way would be there on Harrisburg Pike, in your right of way, so much off center line both ways. But I agree with you, I don't think that that could be parked right up along, yeah, it would be really much.
And that's city, correct?
That's.
I mean, it's O'off. It's our. So any, anything.
Their right of way, I know that's right.
Yeah, anything.
So let's start tagging them.
Yeah, so anything past the white line through the grass is, is ours, so the thing of it is, they have to be tagged, so we have the whole seventy-two hour thing, unless it's in the labor. If it's just a white line, our technique isn't going to allow them to travel. Um, so that's kind of our issue that we have, um, because they're gonna be going within three hours, like, we tag them, but the thought is, if we tag them enough and irritate them enough, they stop putting them right.
That's right.
So we're just gonna keep that.
This, this business just basically continues to thumb its nose at the township on everything, they're the ones that went in. See old Don's market, just went in and plowed the side of the lot, and it's, does nothing but collect water, we're gonna have mosquitoes this summer. Um, and like I said, they have plenty of land if they would just do the appropriate surface and put their cars down there, but they don't wanna do that. They, they just continue, and this is the one where the noise ordinance, that when I was on vacation, I called it, the lady sent the recording and stuff like that, so I'd like to see us start invoking the noise ordinance. That's when I asked the question about why no noise ordinance on his recording game, people have to start calling that in, there is a noise ordinance, and then he can go and enforce it, but if he doesn't get calls, he can't go enforce it.
Right.
And we are, I'm, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, we are proactively gonna be checking on that noise and also the one on Peabody.
I noticed the old ding-ho beh- behind the side of whatever street that is over there off of Broad Street. And when they're starting to really back those, that car lot is, I mean, two inches from the road, the mirrors hang over in the road. Um, we've had that before there where they, um, I don't know, if you had to wanna test drive a car, if it's in the middle, they'd have to move fifteen cars to get that car out.
So one issue we had with them, uh, was with all the road construction on Broad Street, they were actually parked in the right of way, just like we're talking about with sixty-two, and those cars had to be towed because of the construction. Um, so now they're parking on Viotis in the other right of way, so, uh, Officer Baldwin just went up early before I came in here to take care of those cars.
Okay.
Um, if their excuse is, the old pet boys or whatever lets us park there, well, that's not really their problem, cause it's easy. So if they won't let you park in the lot, that's fine.
Yeah, cause I did see them parking in the lot before, and I did go over and ask, "Are you guys letting them do that?" And they said, "Yeah." I said, "Is corporate knowing that they're doing that, or did you just say, 'Yeah, park there,' and they just shrugged their shoulders?" It's private property, it's beyond us at that point.
But the easement, we can take it.
Yeah.
Even if it's the seventy-two hour, they'll have to move the car.
Yes.
We, we win, you understand what I'm trying to say?
They're not gonna move it one way or the other.
They're not gonna want it to go there impounded, they're not gonna, you put a seventy-two hour sticker on it, it's gonna get moved, and that's the effect that we're looking for.
And they don't wanna wait until that seventy-two, there's no leeway.
Right.
You know, and it's not necessarily at that seventy-second or seventy-third hour, so.
Okay, anything else for us?
Most of it's on there.
Okay, next up is the fire chief. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Good seeing you the other day.
And good seeing you.
Let's have some statistics from April for you. Uh, your fire department took eight hundred and ten total runs, a hundred and twenty-one of those in the township. Eight of those were building fires, we had four cardiac arrests with one saved before the G R. And then, that's eight hundred and ten runs with Medic one ninety-three being out of service due to staffing levels for eleven days of April. Medic one ninety-two was out for four and a half days in April, and all of Station one ninety-two was out of service for one day in April. So that was a total of four hundred and sixteen and a half hours that we were not fully staffed and we were down equipment, which equals seventeen and a half days, which brings us to thirty days for the year we've had one piece of equipment out of service. So, sticking on a pretty busy month. Okay, any questions from the board? Here are none? I just also wanted to encourage people to go out and vote on Tuesday for their fire levy. The union will be out on Sunday morning, canvassing, anyone who voted in the November election, they'll get a door hanger, so if you already haven't. So if you already have a door hanger, if you wanna throw yours out on Sunday, we won't waste another one on your property. Okay. We thank you very much, sir.
Yep.
Okay, next up, fire department, Mr. Stevens.
Hello, everybody. On the agenda, we've got, uh, just a couple things to update on the building, as y'all probably seen, you pulled in, our building is now down.
It's gone.
It's gone, and it kinda changes the whole.
Look, you turn the corner and it's like, wow.
And we're moving, I mean, we're moving forward with it, uh, pit with lumber, been in contact with them, and they've been waiting to see when the building got down. Um, the pads, we're not too far away from them coming in and doing what they gotta do. I think we're gonna have to cut out a little section of the asphalt, but we really wanna know that, so to get in and make sure everything got figured out. Uh, but everything is moving forward with that. Um, the only other thing I had on the agenda for today, and I'll have our stacks for the next meeting, we didn't get a chance to get all the together things we ran on the road. Um, we worked into our budget for this year to replace our oldest zero-turn mowers. Um, we've got two that we're gonna trade in, would like to trade in. We've been out, and we've got bids on multiple motors from multiple vendors. I think what we're looking at is, I mean, we've got fifteen thousand set aside in the budget to do this, and we're possibly looking at one that, because the zero-turn motors, if we have to get, aren't the normal zero-turn motors that anybody's gonna use, just a motor for grass. Sometimes you think of cutting grass that's that tall. Um, we're looking possibly spending any, up to maybe twelve thousand dollars on a zero-turn. And I have all the information on those, the ones that, the ones that we're trading in now are eight and ten years old.
What kind of price are they giving us? Is it better to sell them outright than it is to trade in?
It's been kinda really happened down, at one place, they were only gonna give us twelve hundred dollars for a roof level, and then at another place, we're looking at one five hundred and five hundred, so.
I, I, I know that you could do better at just, uh, power worship off and list it, and you would be in the three thousand for each one. Uh, just because they are commercial and et cetera, I, I.
They've been, they've been ran pretty hard.
I understand, um, there's, there's different, um, if you.
We put them on get deals, we don't, we don't actually have to trade them in.
Right, right, I think that you'll make more money that way, because if you look at some different, uh, mo- uh, social media out there where the people post and list things, if you look on their comparisons, you'd be shocked at what they go for.
Sure, and like I said, we can put them on get deals, we don't necessarily have to trade them, and, you know, that price that we're looking at right now, um, is pretty scagged. Um, shaft driven, instead of just all belt driven, so, you know, it would actually hold up, and it's got a higher thirty-six horsepower motor on it, um, engine on it, so, you know, we'll be fine there. That's the one, so it'll be just a little under a thousand dollars. So I guess what I'm asking for the board, to pass a motion, whatever they would need to do, in order to allow me to kind of move forward.
So, do you have a resolution, or did you already put anything together, or, normally, we need everything.
We need, yeah, and I'm not asking for a resolution.
I know, but I didn't know if you want.
We need three, three quotes, that's what I.
So, what I would do, I don't think that we need a motion at this point, is if you've got three of those and et cetera.
On different mowers.
On different mowers, and you ask for a resolution on the one that you want at the next meeting, and then the board would vote on it, so you've already done the work, so I don't think a motion needs, is.
I, I wasn't sure if you guys needed to pass a motion for me to move forward on getting everything put together, like we do for purchasing anything else, I just wanted to.
Do you already have everything together right there? You got your three bids?
Somewhat, somewhat.
Okay, so let's do this.
The next meeting would be with the resolution.
So what I'll do is I'll back up a little bit. Uh, being resolved by the Board of Trustees, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board allows Jim Stevens, room supervisor, to actively seek, uh, bids for a said mower, zero-turn, for the application of mowing in the township.
Sure.
If there's no further questions on that, I'd ask for a second.
I will second.
I do have a quick question.
Okay.
You said you had how much? I just wanna make sure, you have how much set aside?
Uh, set aside fifteen thousand.
And how much, you said one of them is twelve?
One of them, it's, it's like eleven, eleven thousand four hundred, it's gonna be under twelve.
Okay.
Yeah, and these, these are heavy-duty commercial mowers, instead of the ones like I would go buy just to go mow my grass in my apartment.
So you're not two?
One.
Oh, you're just getting one.
We're one.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're showing two. We're gonna trade two in, but we're gonna sell two.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the math wasn't mapping for me, it was just like.
I made a confusion.
No, no, it's fine.
We should get, Mike, uh, around fifty-five hundred to six thousand, from my past experiences around mowers, um, selling.
I'm good, Jim, I just was trying to do the math.
They made a confusion.
Nope, not here.
Okay, so.
We have a motion on the table and a second on the table.
I was just gonna say, if there's no further question, do we have a second, you've already seconded, and, um, if we have a roll call, sir, when you're ready. Uh, Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman? Yes. And Mr. Blavens?
Yes.
Okay, anything else for us? Okay, thank you, sir.
Resolution next time with three quotes.
Well, that's what I, I plan on doing, I decided to get this part of it ahead.
Gotcha.
I, I do have a question, where are we at on summer help?
Uh, we have got feelers out there now, and we've got some kids filling out applications now that school's getting out.
Have we put any ads out yet?
I haven't put an ad on.
'Cause I knew there's a lot of stiff competition.
Oh, it's, it's kinda, it's interesting, but I'm finding out right now.
Okay.
And it's also interesting, we have a lot of people who don't know.
And I think we're gonna have to reevaluate our summer pay.
Yeah, we actually, we bumped that up this year.
Um, we might have to reevaluate it even.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, no worries, thank you, Jim, no worries.
Yeah, this is gonna be part, appreciate that, sir, I guess that's.
I just have, um, motions to pay, uh, bills and payroll. Uh, let's see. This is motion to approve accounts payable. Will be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve accounts payable from April twelfth, twenty twenty-five through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of nine thousand four hundred and ten dollars and fifty-eight cents, from a lot, uh, electronic voucher number one-one-one-five, twenty twenty-five through one-one-two-one, twenty twenty-five. Uh, again, in the amount of nine thousand four hundred and ten dollars and fifty-eight cents.
If there's no further questions on said, uh, resolution, I'd ask for a second.
I will second.
And a roll call when you're ready, sir.
Uh, Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blavens?
Yes.
And then the next thing I have is motion to approve payroll. Uh, be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve the employee payroll for the payday period April sixth, twenty twenty-five through April nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of one hundred eighty thousand five hundred and six dollars and sixty-eight cents. Direct deposits on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-sixth, and the electronic vouchers were eleven twenty-two, twenty twenty-five through eleven seventy-six, twenty twenty-five. As well as elected officials paid for the period of April one through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of six thousand four hundred dollars and fifty cents. And that direct deposit was made on May one, and the electronic vouchers of eleven seventy-eight, twenty-five through eleven eighty, twenty twenty-five.
If there's no more discussion in regard to the motion, I'd ask for a second.
I will second.
A second, I'd ask for a roll call.
Uh, Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blavens?
Yes.
Next I have, uh, resolutions approving obligations authorized by the township administrator. Whereas the Board of Township Trustees, a resolution twenty twenty-one, one thirty, authorized the township administrator to approve obligations ten thousand dollars or less on behalf of the township in accordance with section five oh seven point one-one of the O R C. In pursuit to the provisions of section five oh seven point one-one A of the O R C, the obligations approved by the administrator must subsequently be approved by adoption of a formal resolution of the Board of Trustees. The obligations authorized approved by the administrators presented in section A, which is attached, are hereby approved. All formal actions this board concerning, relating to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board, and in all deliberations in this board, any of its committees, are resolved in such formal action. In meetings open to the public, in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one-two-one point two-two of the O R C. This resolution shall be declared an emergency and be in full force effective immediately upon its adoption. And the total was sixteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars.
If there's no further question in said resolution, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second.
Here in the second, I'd ask for a roll call.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blavens?
Yes.
The next resolution I have is resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six zero. This is a resolution amending resolution twenty twenty-four dash two zero one, approving A R P A funds. Be resolved as Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board of trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, approves and authorizes the amending of resolution twenty twenty-four dash two oh one, in commerce of twenty-five thousand dollars of A R P A funds for the demolition of the road department garage. Be it further resolved that the resolution twenty twenty-five zero six zero is to approve and authorize the expenditures from the permanent improvement fund for the demolition of the road department garage in amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. All formal actions this board concerning, relating to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board, and in all deliberations of the board, and any of its committees, are resolved in such formal actions were in a meeting open to the public, in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one-two-one point two-two of the O R C. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be declared an emergency and be in full force effective immediately upon its adoption.
Here in such resolution, I'd ask for a second, if there's no further questions.
I will second.
Here in the second, I'd ask for a roll call.
Uh, Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blavens?
Yes. I had to get caught up, I'm sorry.
You sound hurry, I totally, they can sign at the end.
Yeah, I don't have the equal first on. May first, may first, I know.
Yours is doing the same thing mine did.
It's not updating.
Yes. Same thing, same problem mine had.
Okay.
All right, the next resolution.
I'm good.
I have twenty twenty-five dash zero six one, it's a resolution approving a new roof on Firehouse One ninety-two. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves and authorizes the installation of a new roof on Firehouse One ninety-two, and either, the quote exhibit attached. Be it further resolved that the roof replacement quote from Allied Roofing is eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The insurance company will submit to the township a payment of seventy-four thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and forty-four cents as payment for the roof replacement. The township is financially responsible for the twenty-five hundred dollar deductible and the remaining balance of twelve thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-six cents. Be it resolved that all formal actions this board concerning and related to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board, and in all deliberations of the board, its committees are resolved in such formal actions were in a meeting open to the public, in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one-two-one point two-two of the O R C. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be declared an emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption. What I do wanna let you gentlemen know is that the twelve thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-six cents will come out of the township permanent improvement fund, much like the demolition of the, uh, building.
Okay. If there's no further questions on the matter, I'd ask for a second.
I would ask, I would second that, but I do have a question. Um, Allied is the company that, um, built us out with the roof issue here.
And, and at one ninety-two.
And when.
So everything here, I forgot to ask about that, if we're taken care of now here, it's all done?
The contractors do it next week, and we get, uh, working on Robin's office, where he'll repair the leak in the roof.
Gotcha.
And he'll do all the, uh, the repairs inside of Robin's office as well. Jim has been tied it up to, to load in a couple guys, so we can start pulling the furniture out of Al Robin's office.
Okay. So we have a second, uh, roll call whenever you're ready, sir.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Blavens?
Yes.
Chief, how many quotes have we had? Four, five different quotes?
Four.
I know we had difficulty getting some of the people here to.
But once you did, they, they rolled in. The next resolution is twenty twenty-five dash zero six two. Resolution approving the repairs of roof, of the roof for the township building. Uh, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves and authorizes roofing wall repairs in the township administrative building of Firehouse One ninety-three, in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars, and again, the quote is attached. Be it resolved that all formal actions this board concerning and related to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board, and all deliberations of the board and its committees are resolved in such formal actions were in a meeting open to the public, in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one-two-one point two-two of the O R C. This resolution shall be declared an emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
Here in said resolution, is there any questions?
I have some questions.
Okay, sir.
Oh, you're ready?
No, no, no.
You're right.
You're good, Mike.
So, the, uh, we're talking that office back there, correct? Eighteen hundred dollars to paint that room? Correct?
Yes.
Eighteen hundred dollars to put in a new floor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I mean, the, the thing is.
Maybe, but you find to be about right, I find that to be outlandish, though.
Well, it's quality.
Okay, I've got my questions answered.
It's just quality, I mean, we, we can cut that down.
No, no, that's fine. I, I got my questions answered, I'm good to go. I mean, I, I see pricing all the time, and that. I've opened one.
Answer my question.
I'm kinda like-minded, and I know that we need to get it done. You know, is it a gallon of paint, and it's eighteen hundred dollars, so you've got seventeen hundred dollars profit, but I get it. But, you know, it's one of those things, we gotta take everything out of there, we gotta get it done, so that business goes on.
He's taking every, he's having this people take everything out. This isn't the crew coming in and taking everything out.
I know, as I said, we, that we're taking, I'm like-minded with you, that the cost of that, and to get that done, and we've had several quotes, and trying to get someone that can do a quality job. I do not like spending that kind of money, 'cause I'm thinking to myself, every time I painted my house, how much was it gonna be, and et cetera, but, um, I, I hate it, but I don't know what else that we can do.
I've got my question.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second.
I will second.
And a roll call when you're ready, sir.
Uh, Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blavens?
No.
The next resolution I have is twenty twenty-five dash zero six three, it's a. It's a resolution approving dumpster rental for cleanup on South Wilson Road and West Broad Street. Be it resolved that the board of trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves and authorizes expenditure of funds not to exceed twelve hundred and forty dollars for the rental of refuse dump dumpsters to clean up the lot located at the corner of Wilson Road and West Broad Street. Be it resolved that all formal actions this board concerning and related to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board and all deliberations of this board, any of its committees have resolved in such formal actions, were in a meeting open to the public, in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one two one point two two, the O R C. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
If there's no said questions in the matter, I'd ask for a second.
Um, I ha, I will second it, but I have a question. Um, and the, the, this, this funds are coming out of which, the money's coming out of which funds? Can we...
This is uh, the road department fund, is that correct, Jim?
I think it was, that's what we wrote.
Okay. That, that's all I needed.
We didn't have it appropriate, we did the general fund, but I have...
No, I, um...
It's not coming out of the road, it's coming out of the road department, but not the road funding.
That's all that's on.
Okay.
And, yeah, I, what Jim said, he's cleaned up the lot, I said, go get the dumpsters and take care of this at the next uh, the next meeting. So I have a second from you.
Yep, and a roll call when you're ready, sir.
Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And the next resolution I have is... It's a resolution approving payment to the city of Columbus for capital improvement project on Briggs Road. Be it resolved that the board of trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approved the resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero two two, to enter into an agreement with the city of Columbus to resurface the south, traveling on Briggs Road from Bricksom Road to Demerus Road. That the college. And be it resolved that all formal actions this board concerning and relating to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board, and in all deliberations of the board, any of its committees have resolved in such formal actions were in a meeting open to the public, in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one two one point two two, the O R C. This resolution shall be declared emergency via full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
If there's no uh, questions in regards to said motion, I would ask for a second.
I will second.
And we'll call when you're ready.
Uh, Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And aside from this resolution, I put right behind it, is another sheet that the trustees need to sign as well. Uh, the next resolution I have is twenty twenty-five dash zero six five. It's protesting potential acquisition of nine twenty Wilson Road by the community shelter board. And whereas it is the understanding of the board of trustees of Franklin Township, Ohio, that the community shelter board is or may enter into an agreement to purchase real property located at nine twenty Wilson Road, Columbus, Ohio, four three two zero four, AKA Franklin County parcel zero one zero, dash two one two, one one three, dash zero zero. The location of a former Conal Lodge Hotel, which we'll refer to as the property. The property is located adjacent to the uncorporated area of the township. However, the property receives township emergency services through a mutual aid agreement with the city of Columbus, included but not limited to police, fire, and E M S services. As a result of proximity of the property to the township, the provision of township services and the expenditure of township funds, as a result of said services, the township has a vested interest in the operations of the property. Whereas without additional information about the C S B's intention for the property, the board does not support C S B's potential acquisition of the property. Whereas the board, the board believes it is in the best interest of the township and its residents to adopt this resolution. Now therefore, be it resolved by the board that, the board protests the acquisition of the property by C S B due to the strain of C S B's potential operations on township resources and services. The board authorizes and instructs township administrator Steve Mazur with the assistance of legal counsel to correspond with the city of Columbus regarding the township's position on the potent, the potential acquisition of the property. The board authorizes and instructs township administrator Steve Mazur with the assistance of legal counsel to correspond with C S B to invite a C S B representative to attend a board meeting for the purpose of discussing C S B's operations and intentions with the property. It is found and determined that all formal actions this board concerning and related to this passage to this resolution were taken in an open meeting of this board and in all deliberations of this board and any of its committees have resolved in such formal actions were in open meetings to the public, in compliance with all legal requirements, including without limitation, section one two one point two two, the O R C. This resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest time provided by law. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be declared emergency via full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
Any questions in regards to said resolution? Here are none, I'd ask for a second.
I will second.
And a roll call, sir, when you're ready.
Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
I'm staying.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
I'm going to jump to the bottom here first, John.
Okay.
Yeah, this is approval of a liquor permit ownership change. I talked with the chief about this the other day. He doesn't have any issues and complaints from the applicant. What it looks like is, there's an ownership change where there were partners that were equal fifty fifty in this venture, and uh, now it's just one owner that holds a hundred percent of the uh, the store.
Okay. So, uh, we need to...
I just need a motion for approval, and then what I have to have done, this is why I need Jim here.
So... Go ahead.
On this particular form, we need the township fiscal officer's signature, but since the board has appointed him as a temporary deputy, he has the ability to sign this form.
Okay. So moved on said uh, motion, if I can have a second, if there's no questions in said matter.
I will second.
Here in the second, I'd ask for a roll call.
Uh, Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
You want us to sign that now?
Jim has to uh, sign it, he has to...
We don't have to sign?
Not that particular document.
Okay. Man, he's an important man.
Signs in the camp.
The next one, we'll go to K, chairman. This is a motion to approve and sign the A E P easement agreement. What this has to deal with is we are bringing additional power from across Frank Road to this property to power the road department building.
Sure.
So I had Julie go through this agreement, she tweaked it a little bit, um, to make the wording a little preferential to the township to make sure that anything on the easement gets addressed correctly, properly. So on this, what I need is um, the chairman's signature, and then, is Nicole in there, chief?
Yeah, I believe so.
And then, uh, Nicole?
Yeah.
I will need you, when you get a chance, to notarize the chairman's signature.
Okay.
So I just need a motion to approve this.
So if there's no uh, said questions in regard to a motion, I would ask for a second.
I will second the motion, but I have a question. Should they're bringing, this, this is, we're bringing it across the road, all the way back to the new location?
It'll run, it'll run the side of the property between...
Yeah. All the way back to the new location with the drop.
Ow. I don't know whether they're waving.
Well, I'm just making sure that we're getting it all the way and not just stopping over here.
Yeah.
Not because of the corner here.
It's supposed to be, the, the gentleman for me, he said they're going to bring it all the way to where we're going to drop.
And so it's one singles. Okay. Okay, I'll go ahead and, and a roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes. I'm, I'm just a little shocked at the eight in construction costs because I've seen them for a lot less, a lot more expensive. A lot more expensive.
Then the next item I have... I almost started to fill this out, where do I need to sign? A print and then sign? Right here, in the bottom? Okay. So by is made, correct? Will I raise my right hand or anything?
And the next, the next item I have is I need a motion, uh, again, this will be the chairman's signature. And I'll leave the amendment, which addresses beneath the motion. This is an amendment to a memorandum of understanding and agreement between Jefferson Township, Madison Township, and Prairie Township, board of trustees. This is an amendment to memorandum of understanding agreement entered into May one, twenty twenty-five, by and between the boards of Jefferson Township, Madison Township, Prairie Township, and Franklin Township, collectively known as the Townships. The Townships previously, previously entered into a memorandum of understanding, an agreement that was not dated but approved in twenty twenty-two, the prior agreement concerning the appointment of James Jewell, administrator of Prairie Township, to the Central Ohio Community Improvement Corporation, known as COSIC. Board of directors, in order to fill the seat available for the Townships on the board of COSIC, and likewise appointed Michelle Reynolds as the alternative or backup township representative on the board of COSIC, in the event James Jewell was unable to attend such meetings. The parties wish to change the alternate or backup to the township representative on the COSIC board, from Michelle Reynolds to Rod Pritchard, Mr. Pritchard is a trustee in Prairie Township. The parties being in agreement with the background explanation and understanding set forth above, hereby amend the prior agreement and hereby designate Rod Pritchard to be the alternate or backup. As the township representative at the COSIC board meetings at which the appointed township board representative, Mr. Jewell cannot attend, Rod Pritchard will exercise any authority permitted to them in their capacity as a township alternative in cases where James Jewell is not able to attend a given COSIC meeting. In testimony whereof, the authorized representatives of the party have signed this amendment on or as of the date first stated above. And this, John, just for clarification for the, our board members, when we attended that, that, um, and uh, Chet Cheney, the person who wanted to know our population, uh, so now we are voting members of COSIC.
Okay.
So I just need your signature on this, John, under, on your, the township.
So do we need to run this across the table?
Yes.
Okay, so be it...
It's a motion, yes.
Yes, so, so with this motion being heard, is there any questions? Here are none, I'd ask for a second.
No, a second.
Yeah, I have a second, sir, if you, uh, do a roll call.
Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
So I'm deciding where it says Franklin Township, cursor? Okay.
And I'll get that back to uh...
For some people that heard the name Michelle Reynolds, it's now Senator Reynolds.
Yes.
And she's no longer a senator.
Is she, or where's she, where's she now?
She's moved to the apartment, or, she's got, taken away in Madison County.
That's Senator? That's why I said she's Senator.
Yeah, I said, she's no longer a carer.
Oh, okay, that's why she has to be removed. Okay. The, the party, not the party lines, but the lines were redeveloped.
Um, then the last thing for discussion with the trustees, um, meeting times.
I'll take it. This is a, maybe able from a meeting that James happened in this and we didn't want to do anything.
Sure.
And then I happened in this, so it got pushed to today's meeting. So, uh, James, John already heard this, you know, but I'll give it to you. So I checked fourteen other townships and, uh, us and one other township was the only ones that was basically holding meetings, um, during the day, and we had spoke, uh, John and I, and some audience participation about maybe, uh, changing some of our meeting times to the evening alternate during the summer, to, excuse me, to see if there's any difference in the attendance of people coming to the meetings. Uh, sometimes when I talk to people, they'll say, that gentleman that was here today that first spoke, he was, he took a day off of work today to be able to come here to, uh, represent himself quite eloquently, I'd like to say too. Um, he hadn't missed work in order to do that, so if we were meeting evenings once a month, he would have the opportunity to, uh, come during the evening time. And, uh, sometimes people say they want that and they don't, because when I ran my campaign, uh, I told people that I would come and have office hours here, and I did it for a couple of months and no one showed up, so I stopped doing it, and I still get people that'll call me and say, I can't get a hold of anybody, and I said, it's, it's not true, I, you know what I'm trying to say, I was willing to be here, I gave office hours and no one came, so I'm not saying it's going to make a difference, I would say that I would like to see us give it a try for the summer months and, uh, see if, uh, we could get some people to come, start at around six o'clock or so, uh...
So what we've done before, we always did the five thirty because we had other people that, you know, were getting off work or et cetera. What if we did, this is May first, it's ironic, what if we did May first through August first, um, and utilized, the first meeting of every month would be in the evening, or vice versa, the second meeting of the month would be in the evening, whichever way, we would go through August first, and then we'll see what happens.
Just willing, I'd like to see us give something a try. I'm happy to do it with everyone.
I'm happy, any, any thoughts on that? So, do we want to just, uh...
Say five thirty?
Five thirty's good, so being...
Tired of talking about it.
Yeah, yeah, so I got it. Be it resolved by the board of trustees, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board has met today, May first, and has decided to move business meetings starting May first. and has decided to move business meetings starting May first through August first, the first meeting of every month... The meeting, you broke my concentration. I know today's made for starting, that means today's the resolution start date. That the meeting will be, the meetings will be held at Frank Road starting, um, the first, the first business meeting of the month through August first will be at five-thirty P M. Followed by the second meeting of the month will be at the original time, twelve o'clock.
So, we're doing the first meeting of the month.
So, do you want to do the first, or you want to do it the other way?
I'd say the second. Oh, I thought we were doing, so you want to do the next week?
This is the first one of the month.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to get people...
So, we would start in June, then, with the first meeting?
Yeah, we were just gonna start in June.
Okay, June? I thought we were gonna do three, June, July, August?
Yeah, because we're, like, we were gonna say, we're at May first. I thought, I just wanna, I wanna give it plenty of time, so this gives people thirty days to get acclimated that the first meeting in June will be at five-thirty.
Okay, the first meeting in June will be at five-thirty, followed by the second meeting being at the reg, regular scheduled time at twelve o'clock. June's meeting is going to be, um, on the twelfth at, at five-thirty. The follow-up meeting of that month will be on the twenty-sixth at twelve o'clock.
Thank you.
Any further...
Are you gonna post that, like, on, we are...
Let me finish the resolution, I know, but we gotta finish the resolution before we interrupt. So, if there's no further questions from the board, if I did have a second?
I will second.
Okay, and we'll call when you're ready.
Uh, Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Levins?
And I'll take a quick question, go ahead.
People can help protect my account when traffic is, why not just make it six o'clock?
Well, we just made it five.
We made it five.
Five-thirty, did we say five or five-thirty?
We said five-thirty.
Okay, five-thirty.
It's gonna be tough for people to get in here, I know the traffic on this way, it's...
That's why I was trying to say, raise my hand, six o'clock.
It's five-thirty.
Okay.
Okay.
Sir? And one last thing, um, we gotta thank Nicole for handling the payrolls here meanwhile Robin was out. So, yeah, Nicole handled, what, two payrolls? And knock on wood, everything like that, no issues, no issues? So, that was a big relief for everybody.
That's great. I think Robin did a great job showing her how to put everything together, and not that Nicole's not smart enough to figure it out, but I think the office staff working together makes a huge difference.
It does.
Okay.
It does.
I do not have, uh, Mr. Leeser?
Um, anything I was gonna speak on was richer, and we beat apples, 'cause it's don't fly, so...
Okay, I really, I think everything we covered, I had in the meeting. Mr. Levins, do you have?
Two quick things.
Sure.
I wanna thank my fellow trustees. I was, I was absent for two weeks and took a vacation, and they all covered great, uh, covered my spot. I received a few phone calls, I think during that time, I spoke to all the department heads over those two weeks several times, I'd spoken to Mr. Mazur, but I just wanted to thank you.
You just don't know what a vacation is.
To clean, uh, up, and lastly, I want to let everyone know that the Franklin Heights Scholarship has been fulfilled for this year. We had applicants, and the committee met and was able this year to pick, um, one young man and one young lady from Franklin Heights. Mr. Mazur will be presenting that tomorrow morning. And we will have the young people come in and receive their check here, um, from the trustees at a later date, as long as they can fulfill their obligations with a letter from the college or trade school they decide to go to. So, I just wanted to let everybody know. So, if you have a young person, especially males, we seem to have a hard time getting applicants that are males. I, we only had one male this year, none last year. Scholarship's open to any male that lives in the township, so, attends Franklin Heights High School. So, I just wanted to get that out there, and that's all I have, sir.
Sure.
I'm gonna send you an email of the Lester's definition of vacation.
I would like to say also, great, um, gratitude that you've done by putting this together, um, for some time ago, I remember when you were sitting back there, and you brought up Franklin Heights High School, and it being in the township and et cetera, and that it's been, um, you know, something heavy on your heart that you've done. So, as a board member, and I'm sure, um, our other board member, Mr. Leeser is, uh, shows gratification as well.
I do, and I also like to say, to make sure it's on the record that all the funding from this is private money, no taxpayer dollars are going to be in it.
Right, so I do commend you on that. With that being said, it is now approximately one fifty-nine, and we are adjourned. Thank you all.
See ya.
Mr. Stevens? I'll get with you tomorrow, I want to get a little bit of an idea of which members we're selling.
Smith, if you need me to meet you up there, tell you, holler at me. Okay. I'm around the corner. My time, my time is, my time is leveled up, uh, evened out now, because she's back driving, so... There's no slowing her down now. She gone.
Good for sharing.
Huh?
I say, good for sharing.